Bow with me. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day in which you've blessed us, another day to serve you. Thank you for all those who care so deeply about our city and those who serve it. Those who care about our city, not just for prosperity for a few, but for any and all of our residents, Lord. I ask that you grant us wisdom to make these decisions that would bring honor and glory to you, Father, that you give us the clarity of mind to make those decisions that are right, not just what is popular. Finally, give us your character to treat all with kindness, mercy, and love, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the meeting to order and we'll open, we'll begin with our work session. Items included under work session are intended to provide opportunities for the city council to study and discuss various issues and gather and analyze information. Council will not take formal action on matters presented at a work session, but may direct staff to place items relating to the matter on future agendas for formal consideration. We'll begin presentation of department budgets for fiscal year 2022, 2023, City Manager and Finance Director.
I got a promotion, I didn't realize that. Yay. No, not yay. So I'm gonna go over real quickly the same slides that y'all saw on the June the 28th meeting. Basically, just kind of highlighting some priorities and some challenges that we are facing in this year's budget. Of course, we continue to have addressing vacancies, recruiting employees in various departments. Most well-known of that is the Police Department, maintaining competitive pay and cost of living adjustments to address our record-high inflation. Would you like to join?
Keep going.
Okay, okay. So also, we've had a very, very high claim year for our self-insurance fund. And so, of course, everything seems to be going up on our supply side. Energy costs, fuel, electricity, meters, valves, everything continues to be, to be on the rise. And so, we have had to allocate a good portion of our normal operating resources to those increased costs, as well as continuing the prioritization of the city's capital improvement plan that we have been working on for most of the past year. Again, the items that are gonna be presented tonight include a increase in city's health insurance premiums from $660 per month, per employee, to $725 per month, per employee. This is estimates to be about a $250,000 increase across all funds, and this is to, to address some significant claims that we had this year. And so, hopefully, that will, will keep us to the point where we can maintain a $1 million fund balance at all times in that self-insurance fund. We've also increased fuel across all funds, about $550,000. We see that fuel is somewhat coming down right now. We have, we are going to leave our estimates as they are because we're just not real sure what the market's gonna do. It could continue to fall, and then we may be seeing another increase soon. So, we're gonna, we're gonna leave our estimates at, at the current levels. Increase in electricity costs, as y'all know, we have an 18-month electric contract that is going to increase our electric, electric cost. An estimated $1 million across all funds. I did get a download since the June 28th meeting from our electric company, and so we're in the process right now of crunching those numbers. I think I told y'all that we probably should expect to see a little more than a million-dollar increase. So hopefully, by the time that we actually present y'all the first draft budget, we'll have those numbers locked down. As well as all the department's operational line item increases, they're all in there. We have not began the process of making those reductions on the operations side. So what you're seeing tonight is truly everything that the departments have asked for, both on the supplemental side and on the operational side. What are not gonna be included in the figures presented tonight are several payroll items. There's no COLA, there are no merit raises, there are no market adjustments. The three frozen police officer positions are still frozen in this budget. There are no recruitment or retention payments presented tonight. Those will all be separate items that you'll see on your next agenda. These are not gonna be presented in the operations, operating budgets that the departments will be presenting, as well as no new personnel or programs. So if they mention that they have asked for a new personnel, that request is there, but those monies have not been plugged into their operational budget yet. So until those are approved, we won't, we won't actually roll those into those numbers. So, budget timeline. So, we talked about this a little last time, and so I just want to reiterate some things that are coming up and, and some items that we're gonna be needing to have council make some decisions on soon. July the 19th, we will be bringing to you the health insurance rate. We mentioned that those bids were coming in on the June 28th meeting. We have received those bids, they have been reviewed. The department heads will be meeting in the morning to discuss, and on the 19th, we'll be bringing you the winner for that insurance rate proposal. We also have an item on the 19th, the resolution for the intent to issue the COs that we've been discussing through the CIP process over the last year. This actually will set a timeline for the sale of those COs. And so, in order for us to do, the feds have a very strict guideline on how many days prior that we have to do certain notifications. And so, this kicks off a, a several-month process. This will set us to, I think, October, I think, the 14th, to actually initiate the sale of these COs. So we will be bringing that to you on the 20, I mean, on the 19th as well. The property tax assessed values by state law are due by July the 25th. So we'll be anticipating those from, from the appraisal district. And then we have several budget workshops. And so, last year, y'all had asked that we have a few more this year. So we've done several more budget workshops than, than we have in the past. We have several more scheduled. Of course, on the 19th, we're going to, to have a presentation and consider the senior tax, the senior and disabled tax ceiling. August the 2nd will be your first time to actually see the draft budget presented. And then, August the 9th was a special called meeting that we had included in order to give y'all another look at, at the, at the budget. It was something we didn't do last year. I understand that we're only going to have three council members present on August the 9th. So if we want to continue with that meeting, we would be happy and prepared to talk whatever, but if, if that's one that we want to, to remove, we can do that as well. And then August the 16th will be the next, the next regularly scheduled meeting. And of course, we will continue with the draft budget of that process. I'm sure we'll have some, some tweaks between August the 2nd and the 16th. And then we're still on to, to adopt the budget and the tax rate in September as normal. Have any questions on that before we get to departments?
One of my questions is about our calendar. Because I know, now that I've been here a year, I know sometimes we've canceled meetings, sometimes we've added meetings, sometimes I, so I have questions about the, like July 5th, we canceled a regularly scheduled city council meeting, and now August 9th, we're adding one. I think it would be very helpful for everyone if we actually had a, a calendar we stood by, unless there was some kind of an emergency, to add something so we can plan, make plans. I didn't understand the canceling of the July 5th meeting, or, because that was the first, the first. Anyway, it's, it's confusing, and it's not just to me, but we have, we have people who live here, staff, who want to come and who want to be involved. And, and I think we had people actually show up for the meeting last.
So the July 5th, I'm assuming that was a holiday cancellation? I don't, I don't know. Yeah.
But everybody was working, you know.
So, so do you wanna cancel the August the 9th? Is that your, is that your thought?
I'm not gonna be here, but I'm just surprised when we get things added. You know, I, I plan my, my world around when we have meetings. And I just think we, it's not just even about this. I'm saying we really need a calendar that we can go by, and we need to be careful about adding and canceling, just, and, and for example, I think we, we know some things that are gonna happen in October, right now. You know, if we were planned all the way out, at least for six months, we would, I think it would be very, very helpful to all of us if we had a real, solid calendar that we could all plan around.
You're talking about like our T, TML meetings? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, we have TML meetings. We also have National Night Out, we have, I don't know what's going on with that. So, so it's, it's, it's just difficult for.
Well, from, from the finance standpoint, the budget meetings, ours are driven more by state law and when we have to have meetings. And so, I will, from time to time, have to add some extras. But as far as the normally scheduled meetings, I, I can't speak to that.
This isn't a question for you, actually. It's actually a question for, for both the mayor and for the city manager. So I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine.
So I'm, I, maybe we need to put that on the next agenda, but I think we need a, a calendar that we can.
The calendar is, we meet on the first and third Tuesday in the month.
Except when we don't.
Well, right, I mean, I mean, we can, for example, the first, the first Tuesday of October is National Night Out. So it's that way every year, has been that way for many years across in Texas, is that first Tuesday of, of October is National Night Out. For example, the one that you mentioned, Ms. Melanger, about one coming up in October. So, you know, when I first started, council was having council meetings, and you weren't participating in NNO. So I figured you would want to participate in NNO, so we, we make adjustments along the way.
So could we maybe prepare a calendar and put it on our, put it on our website that shows the council meetings and these, and the budget meetings and things?
I don't know if we can fully do the budget meetings in 2023, because we don't know them all yet. We don't know until they're published by the state in TML, but, but we can certainly publish our first and third Tuesdays.
Publish it out through '22?
We can, we can, we can do an estimate, but it's literally an estimate. We have to wait till TML gives us those guidelines, and they change periodically, but yeah, we can.
I'm sorry. When we do go through that process and we have special meetings, can we poll the council to make sure we have a quorum here? Just out of curiosity, can we do that?
And, and my request is not about, I mean, I, I think we actually probably could, as you suggested, plan throughout the 2022. I'm not asking for 2023 or 2024. I'm, I'm saying I think we, we have some dates. We assume that people know this, but I, I bet probably half the people in this room don't know that National Night Out, that we're not gonna have a, you know, a, a city council meeting. In fact, several people from my ward were surprised National Night Out wasn't in August, but it was in October, because they looked at the, so, so we can, we just, I don't wanna assume. I think we really need a, a, well, anyway, you heard what I think so.
So maybe, maybe go ahead and do something now through the end of 2022, and then maybe by September, try to go on into '23, as far as we can.
Cool.
Like I said, just add as we know, I think, would be, would, would, would be helpful.
So back to the August the 9th meeting. Would you like to proceed with it? I mean, it, there will be no, it will not be one that we will ask for any decisions to be made. It will literally just be a second look at the draft budget. Y'all get it on the fir, on the 2nd of August for the first time. It will be basically a question and answer session, maybe giving us some direction on what you wanna see on the 16th. But there will be no decisions as far as tax rates or those types of things. So, I mean, I'm happy to continue with it, but if it's one that y'all don't want to do, since there will only be three, I can go either way.
I'm, I'm good either way. We can have it or not, it, it doesn't matter to me.
I'm one of the ones who will be here, so I'd, I don't mind.
Is that two of you gonna be out?
Yes.
I waited a whole year to plan my vacation when we wouldn't have a meeting. But it, I mean, either way, and I won't have internet. To me, it's like a principle.
I think that's great that you need that.
Thank you.
Mayor, if there's only three of you here, all three of you would have to be in the room to have that meeting. A single decision-making barrier that.
If one of us was sick or something.
Okay, well, let's not have it.
That does limit your ability to have push and shove back and forth over the budget discussions.
Well, we all five can't do that anyway, so.
We could in an open session.
But we can on that day, cannot on that date. And, and can we, could we do it later?
Yes, you're, you're, you're still gonna have, you're gonna have the 16th, and then in September, you, you're don't, you don't, you'll still have the public hearing. So y'all can still make changes even up until the point that we actually adopt the budget. So you will have the 2nd August meeting and the 1st September meeting to, to hash out any changes.
Okay.
I mean, I can, I can make changes literally up to the, up to the deadline.
Okay, well, let's eliminate August 9th, if that's okay with the council.
I miss Kerbo, could you remind me or repeat what the, what will be happening at the August 16th, as I am flying in the air back to the United States?
I'll tell you what, let the department start presenting, and I'll pull up the calendar and tell you exactly what's gonna be on there. All right, so, any other questions before we start with the departments?
This is a really specific question, and the COs, do they have to, or do, do just the council votes on them?
Yes.
Or, okay, and it's not a, that doesn't come out to?
No, no, this, this, what we're asking you on the July the 19th is to, the process to sell those, those bonds, okay? And so, that decision is going to be made on July the 19th, to sell those bonds. We'll issue, and there's a, there's a step process so that they actually can be sold in October.
So we're, on July 19th, we're going to decide whether or not to issue bonds and how much to issue, or?
Yes, what, what we're bringing to you is, is the, the same components and amounts that we, we brought to y'all through the, the CIP process. And in April, we discussed and decided that was the, the parks, the streets, the drainage, the fire station, that, that component, that was the like-for-like change-out in the debt rate. Those were those components, it was a little under $20 million.
If we decided to do it.
And that's what we're going to ask you on the 19th, is those things that we discussed on, in April, on the 19th, we're gonna ask you to issue those bonds.
Then it might be helpful to go ahead and send the package one more time that you're asking.
The CIP stuff? Okay.
And specifically related to those COs, since I wasn't on the council yet.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right.
All righty.
Let's move, move on.
We're going to start with Human Resources, and I'm gonna get out of the way.
Good evening. Hopefully, this won't take too, too long. As you can see, once upon a time, we were down to, we, at one point this, this past year, we were down to one person, and so we were fully staffed with four. This is our budget. As you can see, there are two areas that, where there is a pretty significant increase, supplies and, and materials and contractual services. With regard to the supplies and materials, it is material for employee events, like the holiday, spring fleeing, appreciation, things like that, compliance posters, books and training materials for supervisor training. We are also looking at material for the kiosk. We're hoping to set up a kiosk out here for individuals that wish to apply for positions, and they can apply on, apply online. So it has the computer, the chair, the desk, that kind of thing. And then HR reference guides for Americas with Disabilities Act, FML, Fair Labor Standards Act. With regard to the contractual services, that, of course, starts off with a lease for our copier. And then it's, again, recruitment materials such as attendance to job fairs, ad, monies for ads, miscellaneous materials, if we want to produce brochures or flyers, stickers, that kind of thing. And then, it also includes HR training opportunities, as well as citywide training and special services, such as safety. We're hoping to get that started, customer service training, drug and alcohol testing, language testing, background tests. And as well as subscriptions for, subscriptions and dues, which includes memberships to the professional organizations, TML, TMHRA, things like that, as well as the applicant, the recruitment tool, the primary recruitment tool, which is Applicant Pro. That's a bulk of that, which is about $11,000. We have requested $45,000 to renovate the HR offices. As most, all of you have been in there, we're hoping to take out that, that desk, the counter, which is slightly rickety, and put in a desk for those who might want to come in and apply online, and any employees that might be field employees who come in and have to do things like open enrollment. We can help them with that, at that computer and things like that, so. And just kind of bring the office a little more up to date. Questions?
You said on, on Personnel Services, there's no cost-of-living increase or anything like that. What's the difference in the 346 and the 362?
Personnel Service, the salaries? I'm assuming that's.
We, we had a, we have an extra position in the last budget year, and then the salary difference in the HR director from the.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
All right, Michael Donnell, you're IT Manager. Next up is Information Technology. Full-time employees, we have three, we have no vacancies currently, so we are full staff. Operational budgets, not really a whole lot going on there, but as you will notice, in the office equipment and IT maintenance, that has gone up pretty significantly. But unfortunately, that's just the cost of doing business. Most, every piece of software that we own and utilize has a baked-in 5% or less increase every year for maintenance and other fees. And so that's just part of those dues coming every year, so that's always gonna increase. And, you know, beyond that, everything else is either reduced a little bit or stays the same. For our capital requests, we've got quite a few things on there, we'll just start from the top. We're asking for $94,000 for Microsoft Office 365. We currently use Google and the Google suite of products. However, we'd like to transition over to Microsoft and do that in this fiscal, so that's that. Cloud backups, we have a lot of backups going on right now. We do a lot of offsite stuff, but we would also like to get this, you know, your data in data centers that are not physically located in Texas, so that's what that ask is for. This will give us the proper backup tools that we need to get this stuff, freeze it, and help protect it from ransomware, things of that nature. And speaking of, we're also asking for a, a new Systech position. We've had three positions now, pardon me, we've had three positions now since I started 20 years ago, and technology has increased, we have grown considerably, and we still have three. So it would be nice to have four. We would like to spread a lot of our duties and assignments across four people instead of three now. We've had a lot of things come up, and especially here recently with, you know, things of like hybrid meeting nature, but more importantly, fighting ransomware, keeping on top of security, but also keeping on top of our obligations to state and other agencies. You know, are we making sure that we're, you know, meeting our federal and state requirements? You know, we're, as you all have just seen recently, you've got your cybersecurity training thing that just went out to complete. That's an obligation to the state that we have to keep up with, maintain, and report in a timely fashion. So this fourth person, my vision is, that gives us a little more flexibility so that the three are not overburdened and we don't let anything slip between the crack. My biggest fear is that if we have too much going on and we have a cybersecurity incident, we were not able to watch out for it, so moving along. Court upgrade, we've been notified by our software vendor, ENCODE, that the court system is going to be, we're gonna have a mandatory transition to cloud-based only. We currently run that in-house, but they're changing the way they're operating, so this is to get ahead of the game. They're starting to transition customers now, so we'd like to get in, you know, a little early before they get too busy, because this will be something that will be on their timeline for. It's not a huge increase. We pay, I think, around 17 to 20 now for ENCODE, so it is a little more to move into the cloud, but it is inevitable, we have to do it. So if not this year, we will be coming back next year with this requirement, and they will enforce it in the next two years, they said. We're also asking for a new PA system for the recreational library, the one that's over there now. From my understanding, is non-functional. I see this as a public safety issue for them. Unfortunately, with the things, as you've seen in the news here lately, with things like active shooter, they need the ability to come over the broadcast system and let people know, you know, to shelter in place, things of that nature. So that's probably something that they really need pretty badly over there this year, if the one they have is no longer working. And it's also extremely useful for them when they're closing down to let customers know that, you know, it's time to shut down and go home. It's also extremely useful when we shelter for, you know, hurricanes and other things to, you know, put stuff out over the loudspeaker when they need to, you know, let the public know what's going on. And then last, we're asking for a connection. We want to bore fiber between City Hall, go through Festival Plaza, and hit a connection over here with SFA as a redundant link. As you probably remember, we are now in partnership with them with our police system and software. We're looking for opportunities to do more things with them. This will give us another avenue to do things. And by going through Festival Park, it opens up potential opportunities to grow things down there, like maybe Wi-Fi in the park or other things. So it's got some mutual benefits for, you know, all parties involved to have that too. And that is it, questions?
Questions, anyone? Yes.
Could you explain to me in layman's terms, please, why the change from Google to Office?
Yes, for one thing, a lot of people use Office over Google, so it's kind of standard for a lot of employees that are coming in. We get asked quite often, hey, I notice you don't use, you know, Microsoft Online, you know, what, what's with this Gmail? So there's that. To be quite frank, there's some things that I really don't like that Google has been doing lately that has, because at the end of the day, I see them both as almost equal competitors, but there's been some things that Google has done that I'm not necessarily pleased with, where they will make changes, they will enforce those changes very rapidly, and then they will put that on our staff, and then staff is left confused with what's going on. In some cases, they might take features away that we've gotten used to. So that gets to be pretty detrimental. Microsoft is a little more stable, and it's really, I should say they're not slow, but they usually go on a more like long-term plan as to when they make feature changes, take things away, bring things forward. So we're just wanting to get on something that more people are used to and are gonna be happier with. Because at the end of the day, if staff's not happy with what we got, we need to make a change so that they can do their job better.
Okay, and is there currently like an annual fee associated with the city's use of Google?
There sure is. I think right now, we're at $58,000 a year, and that covers all employees currently.
And so does this MS Office, does, is the $94,000 just to, to buy it and switch over? It doesn't include the annual fee, is that what the annual fee is gonna be like?
So the $94,000 is gonna be to buy and hopefully get the services of a professional that does this regularly so that they can help out with this and make sure we don't miss any data in this transition. The $94,000 does include the first-year service. It does include those, you know, upfront costs of, you know, first-year buy potential services. Next year, what you'll see is that Google transitioned out, and then they're gonna cost around the same. I believe, we'll say, 58 for Google, we're probably like 61 for Microsoft, so it's not gonna be a huge increase, but we will have that 94 come down, and it will become just part of our normal operational budget. But you won't see a huge increase at all once we've got this, you know, first piece out of the way and we've made our transition.
Thank you.
So you and I have talked about some of these things, so I'm gonna probably rehash part of our conversation. Would it not make more sense to be able to plan that transition to happen at the end of your term with Google, where you're not paying for the same service twice in a given fiscal year?
We've had experiences now where we have tried to get a software online package from A to B, and just getting all the parties involved has been incredibly difficult. And you run into situations where you might potentially run into, I can't do service because I need to sunset this one quicker than this one can go. Also, this is gonna be a pretty major, significant change for staff. I don't want to necessarily drop this in their lap in one week and say, here, this is what you've got. It would be a lot better for them to do this piecemeal a couple of departments at a time, get them used to it, get them into the office suite, get them used to, hey, you know what? Your files are gonna be online now, this is how you're gonna use this. Then the final piece of the puzzle, hey, now your email's in there, and everyone's had, you know, plenty of time to transition and learn this software, and then we cut both off. But you're absolutely right, you are paying for both, but we had an incident where we got ourselves in a bit of a pickle recently where we, we cut off service with our mass notification system. We were not quite ready yet to go live with the county. We had some unforeseen issues with getting some data from various entities to make this system work, and quite honestly, we were without our mass notification system from November until, I believe, the first of February, before it was even operational, and I don't want to put us in a situation like that again. I would rather spend the money, even though it is money to spend, and get it done and done right than leave ourselves in a situation that we just could not foresee where we're suddenly without the ability to do something. But no, you're absolutely right, we were, we were paying for both that way.
Well, and I, mass notification, I think, is, is probably more significant. Ms. Benita may differ with me when it comes to having Office in, in the HR office. I, I don't question the need to have Office three sixty-five or to have the desktop versions of Office because I think they're far and away superior to what Google's product is. We are a Google shop at Martinsville, we, but we have both. And I don't know why it's that much more expensive for a municipality than it is for education, probably because they subsidize education. But it's, it is a lot of money to, to be paying for two services and, and having, what you're saying is we're paying an additional forty or so thousand for a specialist to help implement this. I, I don't know if that's necessary, but I, it seems a lot to me. And then my other question, I think, was on, on the PA system. What, what type of system are you looking at installing?
You know, I'd have to go back and look at the quote. I'll admit, I just contacted...
Right, just that one facility.
Yeah, just, just a, it's the entire building, but recreation and the library side. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that off the top of my head, it's in the quote that I got from NetSpace.
Perfectly fine, but that, I, I just, that seems a little high to me for, this will probably be the only times I'll be able to ask questions that I can dive into the numbers on.
And to speak a little bit to that, too, a lot of times I'll find at that early stage, we're getting these numbers together, and as we get closer to actually implementing these things, we'll get better deals from people, we'll find better products. And an example of this just recently that we did, we put in the budget, I think it was one twenty, we got one hundred twenty thousand to replace our Avaya system with another Avaya system. But after doing a lot of heavy research throughout the year, looking at options, you know, soliciting vendors and then doing the RFP, that actually came back in the thirties. So it very realistically could be that I'm asking for seventy-five, but it might come in a lot lower than that. So we, you know, we're, we're gonna put in what our initial quote was, and then we'll see if we can't, you know, get it from there or even lower as we go forward.
Sure, thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Teeny one.
Okay.
Um, I know across several offices, we've been talking about tracking things, tracking whether we've completed our trainings, and, and I'm sure there's tracking training in HR, and there's tracking of the water systems and who's gotten their backflow valves. I'm suggesting that maybe we look at a way to have those functions, you know, to, to not have separate staff do tracking within separate departments, just, just a thought.
Okay.
To consider, to maybe not have to expand staff as much to do our tracking and that, uh, tracking and planning is a big function of a city, so. And are any of these costs, do we expect to recoup them from other places? I was looking at the court, the in-cloud migration, do we expect to recoup any of those from some of the court costs or...
That, uh, not, I can't speak to that.
Okay, it's just a, it's just a question all along, as we look at the budget, um, if we could address, we could recoup some of those costs from another.
So court costs are not stuff that we get to keep, it goes to the state. There are two or three funds that they will give us back a little bit. Software may be one of them, so there may be a slight piece of that, but I don't think we contribute enough to the state fund to get much back.
Well, it's just, it's just a question, it, it actually follows up on Councilwoman Fisher's. Are we gonna, you know, save any money from Google, you know, to go into the next system where it might have been? I'm not sure who asked that, but, uh, so all along, I'm looking for places that we might get money back or save.
Where we typically find savings right now have been doing internal audits of especially our telecommunications budgets, finding better solutions. I'll give you an example of one we just recently implemented that was pretty significant. AT&T had a, what was called a T-one circuit to the lake plant, and they were pricing us out of that, and there's not really any service out there. We were paying about four thousand a month, so a couple of computers get on, and that was just all there was. There was no other alternatives. The second that we were able to get a good enough cell phone signal out there for their first net product, we jumped on that, canceled that service, and now we're paying forty bucks a month for their internet. So there are opportunities where we definitely find cost savings, and we just look in other places and see where we can cut back, run smarter so that we can fund other things like these, these things that make sense for our staff.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
So in, in a comment to follow up, not for you necessarily, Mr. Donnell, I really appreciate what you do. Know, knowing your, knowing your field as well as I do professionally, I appreciate what you do, you and your staff do. Just from an efficiency standpoint, I, I don't know, I know we're talking about the increases in electrical expense that we're going to have over the next year and, and on. Has there been any discussion on energy savings? I mean, just as far as changing our thermostats out, where we can manage those remotely?
Just a, a small highlight, sure. In my particular department where IT was concerned, one of the things after we heard about the increases in electricity, myself and Matt Tyler sat down and said, well, are there any things that we can do? One of the things, you know, we've talked about is make sure that all of the computers are set to go to sleep at night, so if you forget and leave it on, well, it's not just constantly running, it goes into a low-power state. If we need to, you know, work on it, click the little thing that says wake up so we can do it. And so there are some things that we have discussed internally to say, like, what can we do to just lower our power footprint a little bit? But that's just from IT's perspective as a, you know, heads up before we discuss.
Thank you. I, I know just from, from my own experiences, we put in EM, Energy Management System thermostats across our district and saved about thirty percent in HVAC costs across the district, which saved nearly a hundred thousand dollars in three years, so. And we, we didn't sacrifice comfort, we turned the air down when we wanted to, so just a thought.
All right. Who's next? How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
All right, Elena Hilton, Director of Planning and Neighborhood Services. And so I'm gonna be covering planning and zoning, code enforcement, and animal services today. So looking at our organizational chart, we don't have any changes from last year. Um, last year, we were approved for an additional office assistant that we share with engineering, but beyond that, there aren't any changes. As far as expenses, you'll see that the majority of the changes in expenses are in regards to materials and supplies and contractual services. Some of those materials and supplies are simply due to the increase in staff, so we have additional staff, and so there's additional supplies that come with that. We also have additional meeting supplies that we're budgeting for, for additional neighborhood meetings. We've added additional Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. And we also have some one-time purchases in there for upcoming comprehensive plan and downtown master plan meeting supplies. So note cards, pens, paper, snacks, things like that, just to cover those one-time calls that we anticipate for that process. Uh, contractual services, you'll see an increase there as well. That's primarily due to increase in advertising costs. So since twenty twenty, the newspaper has increased their rates by thirty percent. And so every time we have a public hearing, we do legal ad. We've also added information to those legal ads, so we have information about hybrid meetings and online. And, and so not only has the overall rate gone up, but the amount of information, like, and number of lines has gone up, so we're increasing that to accommodate that additional cost. And then there's some one-time costs for advertising for public events, for comprehensive plan, downtown plan, and things like that. So that's the primary changes that you'll see there. Any, any change, questions about any of those increases? We are planning on also proposing some fee increases to recoup some of those advertising costs, so increasing the cost of our zone change applications and specific use permit applications, variance applications where we have to do illegal ad in the newspaper. You'll be hearing those discussions la- later, but just wanted to mention that we are trying to recoup those for some proposed increases in fees. All right, so code, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I just, I didn't know.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't know that you were moving onto code enforcement, so I wasn't sure when to ask. Okay, um, in the, the third page of the presentation, I don't know if it's the third slide on there, but it's titled Operational and Service Level Issues, and you cite several, you know, very reasonable things where changes in either the way that we do our zoning and permitting and, and noticing and that kind of stuff has increased workload, which has an effect on your staff's ability to maintain its current service levels, but I don't see any proposed solution to that.
So one of the ways we're planning to address that is currently planning, we don't have any online applications. So when you wanna submit an application, you have to come to our office and submit a paper application, submit a physical payment, we don't have any kind of online payment, and we don't have any kind of online project management system. Everything's paper, or we do it through our internal drives. I think when you guys met last time, Steve talked about, or, or mentioned that we're gonna be transitioning to a new permitting software, which will include a online permitting and case management system for, for planning. So that'll help streamline our processes. So we're hoping that that change will help streamline our application processes, the way we, the way we organize and structure our meetings and notices and create just a better workflow. And so we plan on that really having a big impact on our ability to, for just daily operational things. And if we still continue to have issues, because we have added additional processes overall for planning in regards to public notices and meetings and things like that, but we're hoping that that's, that's offset with this online permitting system that we're hoping to move forward with.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. All right, code enforcement, as you know, this is gonna look a little different because we had the reorganization where we combined code enforcement and animal control and planning, and we also hired additional code enforcement staff. So we went from one code enforcement officer to two full-time code enforcement officers and a, and a part-time, but there aren't any changes from last year to this year. But with the budget, it was, it was a little funny because we didn't have a big point of reference. We were essentially taking that budget out of inspections. And so when you see zero, that's because last year it was combined, code enforcement was combined with inspection. So we did take out kind of that existing cost just for our code enforcement, and then we added a cost for additional staff. And so you'll see those increases reflected with the additional code enforcement staff in regards to uniforms and supplies, and the contractual services is primarily due to training. So we have to certify our code enforcement officers, and they have continued education. So those are those increases that you see from this year to next year. You guys have any questions about code enforcement? All right, all right, animal control. So with animal control, we are gonna be requesting one additional staff person, and we'll talk about that in just a minute. So right now, we have a full-time animal shelter supervisor, three full-time kennel attendants, and three full-time animal control officers. And so you'll see the comparison from this year to next year is one additional full-time, and that's the adoption rescue coordinator. As far as the revenues, there aren't any significant changes in our revenue budget. As far as cost, you'll see primarily there's a cost difference in contractual services. That's really in regards to our electricity provider, so, because our rates are going up, the shelter rates are also going to be going up. And you'll see actually decrease in maintenance and structure and equipment. That's because last year we had fiber optics installed, and that was a one-time cost, and those have been removed now. So you actually see a decrease from, from last year to this year. And when we were talking about the adoption and rescue coordinator, and I may have Teresa come up here and talk about it in more detail, but this is a position that we requested last year. This is a position that would help us facilitate live exits. So rescues, adoptions, we primarily use social media, our, our local rescues and other national organizations to facilitate adoption and relocation of animals that are surrendered to us. We were actually in twenty nineteen approved for an additional kennel attendant position. And just a few hours a week that that person spends on adoption and rescue has more than doubled our live exits. So if we were able to have a full-time person dedicated to those activities, we could increase our live exits, decrease our euthanasia, and that's the time that our animal control and kennel attendants can spend and patrol, can spend on daily shelter activities, improvements. So that's just something that we're requesting to offset those euthanasia rates and increase our overall capacity for more patrol, more shelter activities, and so on and so forth. Does anybody have any questions about the requested position for the adoption and rescue coordinator?
Do we, do we charge for adoptions?
We do, yes, ma'am.
So would we expect to have income from that or not?
Yeah, so our current fees cover our operational cost, and then we actually partner with the Humane Society, and they offer a small certificate to help us with spay and neuter. So our, our fees right now, they haven't been increased in several years, and so we're actually having conversations about increasing our fees because our operating costs have exceeded those adoption costs. So yes, we do have adoption fees, but those just cover our baseline operating costs.
And those are the ones in this, on this animal services budget?
I do have a couple of questions because I went out to animal services last month, May, it's been two months. And I, I learned a lot, first of all, and I wanna thank you for the work that you do out there. And Elena, I appreciate you taking me over there. And it may be better for her, for Teresa to answer. Can you discuss the euthanasia rate and how you've improved that over, over your time?
In nineteen, or twenty eighteen, our euthanasia rate was approximately sixty-seven percent. With that additional person that we were approved for in twenty nineteen, it gave our staff a little bit of extra time to work on specifically networking to rescues and that kind of thing. We went from one hundred sixty-one animals going to rescue every year to over four hundred last year that went to rescue. And that was just with an extra couple of hours every day dedicated to working on live animal exits. Having a full-time position for that, you know, they would be at the front desk all the time, assisting with our office assistant who's currently there. But in the mornings, that full four, five hours that they're there would be dedicated to contacting adopters, contacting rescues, working on getting animals out of the shelter, increasing the time that we're spending on getting those animals out, which would then decrease euthanasia rates because we're moving more animals out. It also frees up time, it takes approximately twenty minutes per animal to euthanize. And that's going outside, getting the animal, bringing it in, giving it the injection, waiting for it to pass, and then doing what we have to do for that. So each and every animal has a designated timeframe, so the less we have to euthanize, the more time we're saving, and those ACOs can spend that time actually patrolling our neighborhoods and getting out and visiting with public and educating people on animal control issues and, and, you know, gaining compliance through education and working with our community to get there. So it's, it's beneficial across the board. It's going to, we hope, bring our euthanasia rate down even further. Right now, we're sitting between thirty-five and forty percent euthanasia rate, and that's, so I mean, that's a significant drop from twenty eighteen with just that little bit of extra help that we've had. And it's, you know, it decreased in nineteen, it decreased in twenty, it decreased in twenty-one. So right now, we're kind of in that weird flux where we have, it's puppy and kitten season. So the first part of the year was really slow, wintertime, and then we had that increase in intakes. So we're having to euthanize more because we just don't have enough space. And eventually, that will level out, and it'll go back down, and that number should hopefully come back down to that thirty-five to forty percent where we were last year. Right now, it's sitting at about forty-one.
So we've had more than a twenty percent reduction in, in the last four years?
Yes.
And, and what's your goal? Where do you wanna get?
Ultimately, we would love to reach that ten percent and be, we'll never be able to be a no-kill shelter. I don't believe... no-kill shelter, I don't believe, because we are, we're taking animals in from the entire county. One of the stipulations for being classified as no-kill is that you're not pulling for space. We're always going to have those instances where we're going to have to do that. So the, the boundary number is approximately 10%. If you can get 10% or below, you're classified as a no-kill as long as you're not euthanizing for space. Now, if we can keep those numbers down, and we can keep it under 10% and not have to euthanize for space, we can be classified as a no-kill shelter. It's just going to take a lot of education, it's going to take a lot of work, and it's going to take more people.
And my last question. We discussed the, that we have in our current ordinances, a requirement for residents to register their animals with the city. Can you explain that a little bit to me? And please don't give me a ticket.
Absolutely. Every dog or cat inside the city limits is supposed to be registered. So if you have a dog or cat, you have to present your current rabies vaccination status because that is the only vaccine that, vaccine that is required by state law. So your animals have to be current on their rabies vaccine, and then you pay either a $5 or $15 registration fee. The $5 is for altered animals, 15 is for altered, and that registers your animal for one year. And then that's a renewal thing that you're supposed to do every year as you upgrade your rabies certificate. You're also supposed to renew your CD tags.
So is, we discussed this before. If we could have some kind of a program that encourages people to keep their registrations up, and I'm guilty of not doing it, and that is a current ordinance that we have, and I intend to, to make that right, that would help pay for this position and reduce our...
Potentially, yes. We have, we did some fee studies, and one of the recommendations that I made was to switch from a metal tag to a microchip. And microchips are permanent. An animal gets lost, it gets tangled up in brush, pulls out of the collar, you're not going to have the tag on, whether it was wearing it at the time that it got away or not. Microchip's not going to come out. It's going to be something that's permanent. The registration is permanent online, so the chips that we're using is through a company that has, when we purchase the chip, it's a lifetime registration for that animal with that microchip. And they can create their own login to the account for the company that we use. They update their information, their address. If they move, they can change address, phone number, anything they need to, emergency contacts. But if we move to that, we have scanners. We can scan animals for microchips in the field, return them in the field. They never have to come to the shelter. It's also, we're also recommending that with that, we do a lifetime registration on the animal, as long as the vaccines are kept current, and they submit those every year, then the registration stays current. Right now, people that adopt are getting their animals registered because we require it at the time of adoption. You'll never see that person again. They don't come back. Apartment complexes with new tenants, they're requiring them to present their rabies vaccination and their CD tag information. But once they check in that first year, even if they have a three or four-year contract with that company and they stay in that apartment for four, five, 10 years, the only time they're ever going to register that animal is initially because the apartment complex is not going to follow up with that. So our system that we're using right now is not working. Most people do not register their animals. So that happens, and they have to present their rabies vaccination status to be able to get that registration. With a microchip, if we pick up an animal, it would be a policy that every animal in the city has that microchip. So if they reclaim their animal, the animal was chipped, and then they would be given a citation. The citation will be dropped if they provide proof of rabies vaccine within a certain timeframe in order to be in compliance and have the animal registered. So it's a whole program. Hopefully, that will help our numbers and also reduce numbers in the shelter because if we know what's out there and we find the animals and they're chipped, a lot of people have their animals microchipped, but they're not registered because they want to know where Fifi goes. So it would be a simple process for them to just send in the microchip information and pay a fee, and then the animal's registered, and they don't have to walk in the shelter.
We're also looking at increasing our adoption costs as well. So our overall adoption, overall fee increase for different types of adoptions and registrations.
Thank you for what you do, and thank you for your passion.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have one quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
About how many or what percent of the animals are from the county and not the city? And the follow-up question is, do we get money from the county?
I'm going to let Teresa answer those questions.
I can, sorry.
I don't know an exact percentage. I can, I can try to get a close estimate and get that number to you. We do not, we do not receive funding from the county.
So it'd be, it'd just be worth, you know, asking for it?
Right. They do, if they use the services of the shelter, if they come in and have their animal microchipped, or if they come in and surrender an animal, then they pay the same fees that
Particularly if you're asked to go out and pick up an animal.
We do not go outside the city limits. No, ma'am.
If they just bring it to you?
They can bring them to us, yes.
Okay, I got it.
Thank you.
Yes, questions? Get ready to move, ma'am?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Community Services.
Good evening, Mayor. Council Brian Bray, your Community Services Director. Councilman Huckabee, I've, I've been in violation of that same thing in the past until I, until I learned my ways, and so you're not alone.
I'm going to get it fixed.
I did the same thing as soon as I found out from Dr. Teresa. So our, our presentation this evening is going to be a little bit different than what you just heard from Ms. Hilton, and that we've combined, as you can see on this slide. These are, these are all of the divisions within the department, just for, make it easier to go through. The good news is those vacancies on there don't really exist. So when this slide deck was created, we had some vacancies in parks and cemetery. We're just waiting on those to be cleared from the Human Resources Department, and they'll be fully staffed. Down in Historic Sites and Main Street, there is an actual vacancy there as that one. That half has been filled, and that was one of the part-time museum assistants, and so they're currently on schedule and are giving tours to the public. But that one is actually the one that you funded last year for the Zion Hill Baptist Church property. And so obviously, we're, with the building not open, we don't want to fund that position. So it's there, excuse me, not funded. We don't want to fill that position. So if you pull that one out, we are fully funded in the Community Services Department. And as a side note, for Recreation and Library, it is...
Somebody said that we already did fill that position. Did I understand that?
You funded it, but we have not advertised for the Zion Hill person.
You haven't hired anybody for that?
No, ma'am, we have not. And then the parks and, and, excuse me, the Recreation and Library positions, those rarely come open. But when they do, they're the part-time, typically college students who fill those positions, and they're highly sought after, so it's pretty rare that they go longer than a month, two months without being filled. So Park and Cemetery, proposed revenue, you can see these numbers are kind of all over the place. Anytime we opened up a new section cemetery, I, I don't know why, but when a new section's opened, everybody wants to buy it. And so you can see in 2018, 2019, we had 160,000, then we dropped to 92. That's because we had a new section in Oak Grove. In fact, for those of you who weren't on, on the City Council at the time, we actually had to hold a lottery. There were so many people who wanted those spaces, we actually had, hold a lottery and do a drawing to see who got to pick their spaces first, second, third, all the way down the list. And the same thing for 2020 and 2021. We opened up a new section at Sunset Cemetery, and that's all an increase. So we fully expect that we'll be back at the 90,000 range, which is historically where we live on an annual basis.
What, I mean, what do we have to sell? What, what kind of availability do we have now?
We have quite a few spaces at Sunset and at Pine Grove. Oak Grove is completely sold out. So those, those two cemeteries both have both upright, family, and flat individual markers, and then, I can't remember the exact year, I apologize. I think it was in the 18, 19 year as well, we opened a cremation section at Sunset Cemetery, and that's just a smaller space. So we were trying to prolong the life of the cemetery, and instead of having a full space for a cremated remains, that takes up a lot more room than the cremated remains need, we created a smaller section that is devoted to just cremated remains. And that was to prolong the life of the cemetery. And, and thank you, Mayor, for interjecting. If you have questions on these, just throw them out at me. So Park and Cemetery Department budget. As you've heard from my counterparts at the last presentation, you know, what, two weeks ago, and then you've heard some here today, especially Parks and Cemetery, a lot of these increases are in utilities and in gas. Imagine from the utility cost, we have sports lighting at baseball, two soccer fields, adult softball, youth softball, they're expensive. So that, that takes a lot of, a lot of electricity. Under maintenance and security of structures, kind of point out a few of the things that aren't in those routine costs. This is, this will be our first year where we actually have a contract with a company for turf management. So one of the goals in, that was listed in the, in the Park's master plan was increased care of the turf at our sports fields. And so we were finally able to get a contract. We advertised this year, they're under contract with Evergreen Lawn Care to provide regular fertilizer, insecticide, fungicide. They're doing soil samples, and that, that lives under maintenance and structure of equipment, and that's why it's, the majority of that increase is from that contract. But we also have to replace periodically things like wind screens. Wind screens are expensive on softball fields and baseball fields, and they, they last a long time. I've been in this position 10 years, and this is only the second time we've had to replace them, so it depends on what storms we have rolled through. But typically, they're a, they're an eight-year lifespan. Trash cans, it's not exciting to talk about trash cans, but we have to replace trash cans. The trash cans that are in Festival Park, one, we don't have enough, and two, they're not very appealing when we have events down at Festival Park. And so we have a cost in here of about $12,000 just for trash cans in Festival Park. And then on contractual services, the vast majority of that is utilities, but we also have proposed to increase our contract with Oak Creek. That's the company that's out of Lufkin, that comes up and does litter abatement in all of our parks. And then code enforcement also uses them to clean, clean roadways, side right-of-ways. And the, the request to increase this year would be from three times a week for our larger parks, Pioneer, Pecan, Maroni, to coming five days a week. And then for the smaller parks, they're currently only coming two days a week. That would increase those to three days a week. And so if, if that part's approved, we would have people, we would have Oak Creek at all of our big parks five days a week, and the smaller parks, which just don't have as much use, three days a week. They also blow off the pavilions, wipe, you know, sweep, not clean, but sweep off the tables and clean the restrooms. So do you have any questions about Park Cemetery proposed budget?
So I, I don't know where this fits in. What about on our trails? Do we, do we clean litter on the trails? And how often do we mow those trails? I, I just don't know enough about that to know.
So the majority of our trail system is under shade and does not require mowing. The section that has almost no shade requires regular mowing, and that's that northern section. I couldn't tell you the frequency offhand because there's some of it that is mowed by bushhogs that is done less frequently than the trail itself and kind of one mower's width on either side. And that is done more regularly, I think. Once a month. I forgot Tommy was in the back, and he's the expert, and I could ask him.
Well, I, I've, I've gotten several calls about the mowing on that northern section that you mentioned, and it is, I've seen pictures, and it's very tall.
Yes, sir.
So...
And that was, we, we received a complaint about that at the beginning of the spring, and we have been hopefully on top of it since then.
This was in the last week.
Okay. We'll, we'll take a look at that, thank you.
I, I received one also, just... I have one, I didn't mean to interrupt your questions, I just wanted to...
Was there, what about the litter on, do we have a lot of litter on trails? I, I don't see a lot, but do we, do we clean that up?
Yes, we actually have, there's a, a two-person crew who is responsible for walking the trail several times a week. And so, yes, that is one of the things they do. They also look for downtrem, excuse me, down limbs, also trees that are hanging or anything impeding the, the flow of traffic down the trails.
Excellent. I'd love to have the opportunity to, to meet with you and, and learn more about your department because I haven't gotten to yet.
Well, and I'd love to go walk the trails with you.
Let's do it.
Gives me a chance to get out of the office.
Let's not wear this, though.
I agree.
So I'm wondering about the trail that is to be named after Francis Schaffner that was supposed to be completed. Where are we on that? And I know the money was allocated.
Sam Kramer from the Engineering Department sent me an email on Saturday or Sunday this weekend, I can't remember the exact date, and he has flown, what we were holding up on is the parking lot. And he has flown and gotten the topography of the parking lot so it can be laid out exactly so it can go out to bid. Because it's an accessible trail route, so we have to do that part and then tie in the trail going north, which is the Schaffner Loop Trail, which is you're referring to.
I asked, I know I asked you this, it was, I think, my first question I asked a year ago, so what?
Wait, because it was bid twice, Phil and the rest of the council, ma'am, if you don't mind, just to give a little bit of background.
Sure.
So we have, we have a trail that is, the City Council named the Francis Schaffner Memorial Loop. We went out to bid using bid specs that we had used for a different section of trail. We went out twice, and the cost came back so high that we had to scrap that idea and reinvent, how are we going to still fulfill this, making this loop, but make it cost-effective? And so we went to the Engineering Department. Sam Kramer and Case and Steve have all been working on this, and they have come up with a new way of doing this, a new, a new path for, for paving this trail, not paving, but laying out a trail. And so we suspect that it should be coming out this summer for bid. Another time.
And the funds were, are set aside from a funder, right?
It's a, it's a combination of city funds and from a donation. Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Okay. I, I just promised I would ask this, and, and, and they were out to bid, the two bids were already before last year.
The first, one of the, one of the bids did go out last year, yes, ma'am. The, the second time they went out to bid, I believe, was last year. I don't remember, I don't, I can look it up and email you when I get back tomorrow.
Sorry. The other question about the trails is, I, I think there's several runners. There's one in my own family, and I, I understand that we can't cut the roots because then we'd be cutting the trees, but for some reason, the trails have become a lot harder to run on in the past year or two in particular. And this is just to protect my husband who comes home bloody every time he runs the trail, and also all the runners who come by my house and the 5Ks, and, well, they don't go the trails, but when they do go the trails, they're skinned up. What, what, how do we, how do we keep those trails runnable? What, what's the difference? Why in the last two years do we have these big roots that are like, there's one that you actually, it's there to trip you, you know?
And this is...
I probably know which one you're talking about.
I know, you know exactly.
This can be a fairly lengthy answer, and so I'll try to give the shortest answer that I can. I have walked that trail system with our TML risk pool person, and it gets very tricky in how we address certain areas. So if there is a drop-off, drop-off of three feet, and we deem that there needs to be a handrail at this section, and there's, the drop-off is three feet. Everywhere else along that trail that is a three-foot drop-off requires that same treatment, even if it doesn't necessarily warrant. You know, if we all walk that trail and we said, well, this section's fine, and it's a four-foot drop, but then that section half a mile up is a two-foot drop and it requires a handrail, it doesn't matter, you have to address it throughout the length of the trail. And so we, we try to address those things without impacting the entire length of the trail.
So what's changed in the last couple of years?
Erosion.
I mean, erosion is most likely the answer, but I couldn't tell you exactly what has caused that section that you're, it's by Martinsville Road, I believe.
I think the whole trail has, has gotten, you know, a lot. I'm not a runner, but I can...
And we've had several floods, we've had several floods that have...
I mean, I've, I've seen it, I don't know what you do about that, though.
We, we go in periodically and we'll fill in with iron ore gravel, those low spots, and then we have a heavy rain or it just washes out again. It's, it's a constant maintenance issue that we deal with.
And part of the reason I bring it up is because we're talking about bringing in people from outside, and I have heard from people who visit us, you know, I, I really like coming here and your tra, but your trails are getting a lot worse. And, you know, and those are one of the big assets you've got, so please take care of your trails.
And some of it is also going to come down to staffing. I mean, that's the, as we expand our park system, we, we are limited on what we can address. So I'm not saying that's the reason, I'm just talking about that's, that is, as we add more planners downtown, that's more time. You know, as we increase our trail system, that's more time. And so we may have, in the section you're referring to, we may have just gotten behind because we're addressing other areas at the same time.
I wonder if this can be an assignment for the newly seated Parks Board, whenever that ends up happening.
I think it'd be great.
To study that, yeah?
To study that.
Great idea.
Thanks. Today's my day.
Get a great idea today.
Any other questions on parks? So recreation, next year we'll be able to finally roll off that, that low number of 118,000. Those, those first two numbers are directly related to COVID. There's no other reason for those low numbers besides that. We have every expectation that we'll be at 220,000 this year. We were already at 130 at the end of April. You can see a couple of those big changes down there at the bottom, like adult programming saw a big increase, but that's because we had, in last year's budget, excuse me, last year's revenue, we still had class sizes limited. Zumba, for instance, everybody had to sit inside or stand inside of a 10 by 10 square. Well, that cut the numbers almost in half. Kind of the same thing for our, our youth sports. That number rose drastically from 7% to 23%, because we didn't have basketball last year. So that's why, I just wanted to explain that pie chart. For those of you who like numbers and graphs, that's why there was a big change in, in those two. Recreation, almost all of these are some one-time expenses that, you know, when you have gymnastics equipment, basketball hoops, things need to be replaced. So our basketball hoops that we put on for the lower age groups, the five, six-year-olds, the seven, eight-year-olds, they're not shooting a basket at a 10-foot-high hoop. But the ones we put on there now, staff have to stand on the ladder and put them on, and, and they're getting old, and they need to be replaced before it becomes a safety hazard. So that's something that would fall under supplies and materials. We also have in there for a curtain during our volleyball season. If you've been in that gym, you can see that the, the courts are fairly close together. And once again, these are youth, these are youth playing volleyball, and they miss a lot of balls. And a lot of balls roll into the other court, well, then that interferes with play on that other court. And so we're asking for a curtain, so we can divide those two, so the ball hits the curtain and comes back. Those are just a couple of the examples. And I know, Councilmember Huckabee, you were asking about sort of decreasing our cost from utilities. That actually falls under maintenance of structures and equipment. We did a test in the recreation office this year, where we switched out all of these fluorescent tubes with some LEDs. We reduced the number of units that we needed, and then also realized that the light was a lot better as well. And so we're requesting quite, quite a few dollars to replace the ones in the gymnasium, which is the gym, and the hallway, and the entry to the recreation center and library, to further decrease our utility cost. And then under contractual services, the reason that number has changed so much in the last two years is because that's where we pay our instructors. So every class, the fee comes in, and then we process it out. So if our revenue rises, so do our cost and the instructor fees, because most of our instructors get a portion of what we bring in. And so that's why there's that change from 116 to 211 to 226, is we're adding more programs. Well, then we have more expense, but we're also covering that expense through the revenue stream. Any questions for recreation? Public library, there's really not much under supplies, materials, maintenance of structure, equipment. The, the real change is in our contractual services. They're requesting an increase in hotspots. They, we added some, and you know, you, you approved the funding last year. They're requesting to add some more because they're so popular, and people are checking out the MiFi's on a regular basis. Even our animal services department uses them periodically for work purposes. Well, then there's a fee, there's a data plan associated with, with having those. And then also, we're very lucky that we, we have been in partnership with SFA's catalog system for, I don't know, how many years, Mercedes? She said since the beginning, 1990-something. So since the dawn of, of that system, we've actually been able to partner with SFA. And so they, they purchase the system, and we pay them for use of their cataloging system. They've told us this year that that fee is going to go up because their provider is increasing the fees. So that's really the contractual services, what makes up that $12,000 increase. Historic sites in Main Street. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to mention while we're talking about the library, I know it takes a lot of extra work to go ahead and, and apply for grants, and receive those grants, and then administer the grants. And I really want to say how much we appreciate the library doing that for our children and our families. And it's been so successful, and all the activities that are provided under those grants. And I am sure you don't pay her extra for each grant she gets, even though it's a lot of work. So I just wanted to publicly say that.
Thank you. Mercedes, Mercedes and her staff do an outstanding job.
And I'll, I'll second, I hear constantly from the community, what a great program and library we have, so.
Absolutely.
So historic sites, supplies and materials, that is, that several thousand dollar increase right there, I mean, their budget's obviously much smaller than the ones we just covered. But that supplies and materials is, is designated for Zion Hill once it opens. That's office chairs, desk lamps, desk, it's small, small items like that. But then to explain that big number down there at the bottom under contractual services, is the 2021 year, historic sites and Main Street were not combined. So starting in the 2122 year, they were combined, and that's where the Main Street sundry account lives. That is essentially the, as staff call it, it's the wine swirl account. That's where Jessica Sal and her, her Main Street folks bring the money in and then process the money out. And so Ms. Kerbo has placed that, it's roughly $50,000 in that contractual services, so it has a place to live. And so that explains that, that large increase from 45,000 to 102,000.
But we don't see the revenue from that?
No, sir, it's not, because this is just the expense budget. So here's where the big requests are. So outside of these first two items, everything else is pretty much maintenance in nature. The full-time horticulturalist, I think everybody's been here long enough, if you remember when we first started doing the planter boxes downtown, and we had a contract with a company, it was actually Business Where the Brewery Is today, I think it was Butterfly, Dragonfly, Dragonfly, I think was the name, Dragonfly was the name of the, the nursery that was there. And the city contracted with Dragonfly to supply all the plant material and take care of them in terms of switching out the plants. But then the city needed to hire someone to go through and water them. And so we created this part-time gardener position, which essentially was just a water cart person who rode around and watered all the plants. As time has changed, that person, well, the person who started is, is still with the city, but in a different department. But we've hired several other people over, over those last several years. And now that person is charged with changing out the plants in 37 hanging baskets, 29 planter boxes, and 50 individual planter containers that are outside of businesses. Watering alone in the summer is a 30-plus hour duty. And so the park staff are having to kind of supplement, because the parks, the rest of the parks crew don't have the knowledge base to grow the plants, know which plants belong in which planter box, depending on the sun. And so what we're having to do is that part-time person is devoting their 20 hours a week to just plant care. And we're requesting that be changed from a part-time to a full-time person, because over the last several years, we've also planted four pollinator gardens. The last two years, we've planted over 500 trees in our parks, with plans to continue to plant more trees. They consult with historic site staff when they're trying to figure out how to better grow the sugarcane crops or the, the heirloom vegetables. So there's, there is a big need for a full-time person and not just a part-time person. And that's why that number is, is not graded in the 40s, we're already funding 20 hours of that. The next one is essentially a reclassification of a person. So, you know, I told you in 2021, Main Street and Historic Sites weren't together. Well, when, when Ms. Sal was the Historic Sites Manager, we also added to her plate and said, you're also the Main Street Manager. We've had a reorganization since that time. And Ms. Sal is now the Community Services Assistant Director, and we hired someone to be just Historic Sites. Well, Jessica had the pleasure of holding on to that Main Street title, even though there, she doesn't necessarily have the time to do Main Street duties. Bethany Mel is our part-time Main Street person. So the request is to take, she's a full-time person, but part-time duties of Main Street. The request is to reclassify her position from museum, not museum, what's it, Main Street?
Main Street Assistant.
Thank you. Main Street Assistant to Main Street Manager. And that's where that 15,500 comes from, is, is reclassifying that position from, by title, which then changes the pay grade. Does that make sense, Ms. Fisher? And like I said, the rest of these are, are pretty much maintenance in nature. I know Ms. Sal came and presented not too long ago, the Stern-Huie and Durst-Taylor roof, where we requested to cancel those bids. Since she came and presented those numbers to you, we have gone out and looked at several other companies who provide a, a non-wood shingle roof, they're artificial materials. And we know that one company that we're, we're specifically interested in has given us a quote of 87,000 instead of the 94,000. But we went ahead and left that 94,000 in there because we haven't gotten approval from THC to be able to use that artificial material. The benefits, you know, last time Ms. Sal said, we know it's a longer lifespan. We now know that there is a 50-year limited warranty, whereas the wood shingles last an average of 10. So our goal is to go with that artificial material if this is approved, and be able to present bids to you at some point here in the future in the next budget year, and say, hey, we're, we have been approved by the Texas Historical Commission to proceed with this artificial material, which has a lifespan of 40-plus years as opposed to the 10. And that's the same case for both Stern and Durst-Taylor roof replacement. Zion Hill Parking, the city owns a vacant lot across from Zion Hill on the corner of Bodark and Lenana. And engineering has designed a parking lot, and this budget right here would allow us to pave that for additional parking for the museum. Oak Grove Cemetery, all of you have probably been there with friends from out of town. It's a wonderful tourist attraction, the road just needs to be repaved. Every road in the city, you've heard from Mr. Bartlett, you know, needs maintenance, and this is one of them that, that needs some attention. ADA Ramp at Stern-Huie Museum, this isn't the, the decking, but actually the handrails and the spindles. You know, anything and everything in a 1830's building needs repair work. And that's what this is, it's just to repair and keep, keep safe the ramp. The youth softball gator, to give you a point of reference, our mowers in the Parks Department are replaced every 1,200 to 1,500 hours of operation, and they're in an automatic replacement. This gator is a 2006 mile, 2006-year model with over 2,000 hours. This is the only vehicle that they have to be able to go in and drag the fields at the youth softball complex. The, the youth softball president happens to be a city staff, and so he talks to me all the time about, Brian, you really need to replace this. We've duct taped the seat, the brakes are starting to go out, so it's, it's more of a safety thing that we need to replace, not just a desire because we want something sparkly and shiny. Tractor with grapple, even though I was out of town, I heard Mr. Bartlett's presentation about, he went like this with his hand. The grapple would be a, a great benefit to the Parks Department. Right now, they're using a Batco, and a lot of times they have to pick up smaller pieces with a Batco to load them into the dump truck. The benefit, if this is approved, is this is a tractor that, and grapple that will replace two tractors that are a 1994 and a 1996 model, that have very limited use because of their age. One of them is only a flail mower, it can only be used for that one duty. And so we're requesting to get rid of two of them and replace it with one that has the ability to have a grapple on the front. Cemetery Gator, much like the one at softball, except this one has over 3,000 hours, and actually came from downtown, where it had a water tank in the back and was used to drive up and down the streets. In the cemetery department, if you've been to a cemetery, you know you can't drive a vehicle through the middle of the sections. The gator is small enough that it can drive in and out of all of those headstones, and pick up blown flowers, trash, down limbs, et cetera. Youth Soccer Fencing, about eight years ago, the Youth Soccer Association installed some tee posts with some hog panels to keep balls from going in the creek. They, they're worn out, they need to be replaced. And so this, if this is approved, this would allow us to install chain link fencing, which is much more aesthetically pleasing and will last a lot longer than what we have there today. Downtown Mule Replacement, this one is actually in the equipment replacement fund. Okay, just making sure. So funds have already been set aside for this one, and this would, that, that's what their request is, to replace it before it stops working. So that we have, like our mowers, every three years, we'll replace them so that we're not down equipment.
This is the only one?
Yes, sir, that is the only one. The other ones are too old to have been included in that equipment replacement. And then finally, the Railroad Depot sign, it's cracked. The, the image that's on it, the little oval image that's on it, is, is cracked and faded. And so we're just requesting to replace that sign with something that matches the rest of our signage. Mayor and council, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody?
Thank you.
Mayor, we have three smaller departments that are still remaining, but I realize it's 5:30. So we do have a item further down after the regular agenda to come back and finish those three, if you want to go ahead and break now.
Okay, I think that's a, I think that's a good idea.
And I think we might, at the end, talk about some principles, maybe. We don't have to have any votes or anything, but just some principles or some ideas in general as we go forward. Might that be inappropriate? Use of our time too, right at the end?
That fit the agenda, is that all right to do that?
Is that all right to just talk about how we approach this? You're nodding, he's frowning. No, about how we're thinking about looking at, at the budget, you know, like.
Good.
That's related to all these presentations.
Sounds great. We're going to recess for a few minutes and try to get started as close to 5:30 as we can. Okay, we'll go back into our, and begin our, our regular council meeting that's scheduled for 5:30. They were just a touch late. And we'll move to open forum, and we do have one individual to speak to us today. Dr. Roman, if you would come forward, please.
I'm Dr. Roman, I live in the county. I want to thank you all for serving our city and for how we struggle to make the budgets balance. And so, and money makes the world go round, but, but I'm not here to talk about that. I'm talking about something that's even more important than money. We're talking about our students in this city. We actually have something that's been set up for several months with Dr. Trujillo and all the law enforcement agencies here in Nacogdoches. And we're having a week-long, one whole week of active shooter response exercises at McMichael. So if you hear people saying, I saw all these police cars at McMichael, well, I went by there today, I counted 13 NPD cars, and there were unmarked cars, too. And there were a bunch of sheriff's cars, so, and then also SFA police is with NAC ISD's police. So they're, they're practicing, and if you recall, there was an editorial from Paul Howe recently, saying, we need to have that in one of those new schools. Well, that's what we're doing, and we're testing radios and testing protocols. And we're actually practicing what we, what we should be doing if it ever comes here. And I think it's a really wonderful thing, and, and thank you for listening, and thank you for this opportunity, because I never thought about doing it this way. So thank you for us working together for the good of education and our children of this city.
Thank you. We appreciate you and the school board. And also, I think DPS is part of that as well. I think it's what Dr. Trujillo told me today. So thank you for that. I appreciate you putting the city in, in with you, too. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there items to be removed from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Have a second, thank you. Those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, same sign. Okay. We'll move on to number seven, regular agenda. City Council receives staff recommendations and public input on the following items and may deliberate and take formal action on the item. A, consider approval of a contract by and between the City of Nacogdoches and Sinagro of Texas CDR, Inc., for the 2022 SWTP sludge removal and lagoon repair project in a not-to-exceed amount of $217,913.75.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sam Kramer, project engineer. I'm asking you to consider approval of a contract by and between the City of Nacogdoches and Sinagro for the 2022 surface water treatment plant sludge removal and lagoon repair project. So a bit of background on the project, we have two earthen lagoons at the surface water plant. These collect, and this is the technical term for it, sludge, from our treatment process. And this is just a high concentration of organics and sediment that are found in Lake Nacogdoches. And so this sediment settles out in the lagoons, and the water evaporates out from it. And eventually, over time, these lagoons fill up with sediment, and they need to be cleaned out. And so that's exactly what we're doing with this project. Our contractor will bring in, pump in water, and then bring in a vacuum truck to pump out the slurry that they make with this water and sediment. And then that will be hauled to the air- And then that will be hauled to the airport where we have a permit to land apply this sludge. And then at the second part of this project is the lagoon repair aspect. So we'll be repairing the lagoon side slopes just to their design criteria, putting in the clay liner and making sure it is holding back all the the water that is being put into the lagoons. And then we'll also be regrading the bottoms of the lagoons to to make them level so that the water has the most surface area to evaporate in an efficient manner. And so that's the project. So we received bids for this project on the thirtieth of June, twenty-twenty-two. We received two bids, one from Sinagro and one from Denali Water. And our low bidder was Sinagro. And you may see in the bid tab that there was a bid irregularity. This is not a huge deal. What happened was in their bid items, they miscalculated when they totaled everything up. The difference was twenty-five cents from what they said to the actual correct summation of their bid items. And so we have in our contract documents language that says, you know, in this event, that we are supposed to use the correct summation of these bid items rather than the amount that they gave us. So that's exactly what we did and that was the recommended bid award number. And so we do have past experience with Sinagro, working with our water utilities staff. And we believe them to be capable of performing this project successfully. And so we recommend award of the low bid to Sinagro in the amount of two hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. And I'll be happy to answer questions after public comment.
Great, thank you. Is there any public comment? Okay, thank you. Council, any comments?
I have a question. There seems to be a big difference between the two bidders, can you explain that?
Yes, ma'am. So our our kind of estimate for this project was about two twenty-five. And so we we just see that Denali is high on their bid as well.
Right, can you explain why they're so, why they're so high?
I I haven't, I can answer that, I can look into the bid items, I didn't, I don't have it right in front of me, but yeah.
Do you think maybe they did, they bid different things or more things?
Yeah, they just, they they probably just bid more on each item.
Not necessarily more work, but more money?
Yes, yes, sir.
Where where are both those businesses located, just out of curiosity?
Again, I don't have the answer in front of me, I'm sorry. I know Sinagro is located out of, I think, Maryland. And actually, Denali is out of Arkansas, so I do remember.
I'm always curious why we can't get businesses who are closer to us.
Yes, ma'am, I do, I do believe we had a few local, more local businesses interested in the project, they just didn't wind up bidding it.
I wonder why?
You know, certain corporations, contractors, it's just not in their interest to to do this. It's a big project that they may not be as qualified for as the bigger bigger companies like this, so unfortunately.
That's okay, I'm just curious.
Yes.
As we, and has nothing to do with you, but as we talk about bringing businesses here, we spend a lot of money, so I'm very interested in seeing that, you know, that maybe some of what we send way off could be spent here, that's all.
Yes, no, and I totally agree.
It looks like Sinargo of Texas, though, is in Fort Worth.
Yeah, they have an office in, they have an office in Fort Worth and Houston and I think they're, I I know the the woman I was corresponding with was out of, out of.
Out of Maryland.
Maryland, yes.
So I know our budgeted amount in the item report is four hundred and, is it twenty-five? That we had budgeted, this is a budgeted item, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we had budgeted four hundred thousand and they came in significantly under this.
Yes, sir, so the the budget item, the budget amount that you see there is the total amount in that budget. What we had in the budget is kind of a line item that's not necessarily for this project, but just kind of takes out and says, hey, this project is going to cost about two twenty-five. So we did have that in the budget, you just don't see it there.
So even from what we projected, it's below that. So if we projected two twenty-five, we're eight thousand dollars under what we projected. Perfect, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, do I have a motion?
Yes. I will make a motion to approve the contract by and between the City of Nacogdoches and Sinagro of Texas CDR, Inc. for the two thousand twenty-two SWTP sludge removal and lagoon repair project in a not-to-exceed amount of two hundred seventeen thousand dollars nine hun, sorry, two hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents, waiving all bid irregularities.
I second the motion.
Second, any discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to B. Consider approval of a mid-year budget amendment ordinance, amending ordinance number eighteen eighty-one dash oh-nine dash twenty-one, appropriating various amounts in accordance with the budget adopted for the fiscal year beginning October one, twenty-twenty-one and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-two.
Mayor, Council, this is our normal mid-year budget amendments. It's a little past mid-year, but we have had a strange year this year. So we have been waiting on some finalized numbers on what we were going to be looking at on fuel overages, as well as the majority of these budget amendments deal directly with fire deployments. And so until the Fire Department has the ability to collate all of those expenditures and their requests for reimbursements from the state, it makes it difficult for us to do this. So you will see another set of of year-end budget adjustments. This this set just happens to be closer towards the the year end than we normally do. The the significant portion in the general fund, as I said, are related to Fire Department deployments. We have about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of expenditure so far that I am asking us to amend the budget for. We also have some revenues associated with a couple of those that we've received the money for so far. We cannot recognize that revenue until we actually receive the money. So we still have quite a bit of money outstanding. The fire deployments that we have in in this year's revenue are about half a million dollars. And so we would like to amend the budget for that, as well as we have started seeing some of our payments come through for the winter storm and for the vaccine team deployment from COVID. And so as those monies have come in, of course, they were not budgeted because these were all emergency-type situations. And so this is just to clean up both the revenue and the expenditure side on on those particular items. Outside of that, we have a handful of things that have come up during the year broken. We have some vehicles that have to be replaced because they have died on us. And fuel, of course, has has been a big issue. The two main departments that have the most significant budget shortfalls for fuel are police and garbage, sanitation. As you can expect, they are on the on the streets pretty much all the time. And so the fuel for the Police Department, we anticipate being right at seventy thousand dollars over budget. And for sanitation, almost a hundred thousand dollars over budget. And so we are trying to to right-size those as best we can. We have a couple of items in the Utility Fund where we are actually doing a a transfer from wastewater, no, from water production to wastewater for the TCQ pre-treatment program. So it's not an increase in, a increase in budget, but actually just a transfer from one department to the next. We also have included a CDL training contract that will be, that will be split between the three funds so that we can do the in-house training. If you'll recall, we discussed that last week, so we can do the in-house, I mean, not last week, the last meeting, the in-house training for our CDL program. We've had some AC units go out. So that that's the the majority of these, the the last section is vehicles. Like I said, we've had quite a few vehicles that we've had to have been limping along with and borrowing from police for several of these departments, trying to use old police vehicles because these vehicles have actually just just died on us. And so actually, on the nineteenth, we'll be bringing to you a a contract with the by-board to purchase this, the second set of vehicles so that we can, we can replace these at the animal control parks and, let's see, water utility billing has one that needs to be replaced as well as utility construction. I think I hit the high points on the equipment replacement fund, those vehicles, animal control parks and then the inspections software, those are, all those monies are set aside. That is our equipment replacement fund. And so there are money for those, it's just, we just need to adjust the budget figures for that. Questions?
All right. Any comment from the public? Okay, any comments from council, questions? All right. Do I have a motion?
So move, that we approve agenda item seven B as written.
Thank you, have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We will move on to C. Consider board appointments for Building Standards Commission, Convention Investors Bureau Board, Historic Landmark Preservation Committee, Mayor's Committee on People with Disabilities, Nacogdoches Housing Authority, Planning and Zoning Commission, and Zoning Board of Adjustments. The council met in committees last Thursday and Friday and we were very excited at the number of applicants that we had. In the past, we have struggled at times to fill certain boards because of a lack of of interest. That was certainly not the case this time. You know, again, we had, we really had more people than we could, than we could fill. Because of that, we are going to look to expand one of the boards in particular. That's the Parks and Recreation Board. We are not able to do that tonight. There was some wording left off of our agenda that related to Parks and Recreation Board member appointments and we will take that up at our July the nineteenth meeting. But we are able to appoint the other boards. So again, thank you to all of those of you that applied. And these are the the appointments that 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 I would recommend. Convention Investors Bureau Board, it's a three-year term, would be Shay Runnels and Tammy Purser. Can I do all these at once with one motion?
Yes.
Okay. Building Standards Commission, that's a three-year term. Regular members would be John Wyndham. And then alternate members would be Harry Turvalon and Steve Correy. And certainly, the alternate members, we want you to to be a part of those meetings and attend and and then you'll be, alternates will be called on at times to participate. Next would be Historic Landmark Preservation Committee, three-year terms, Gretchen Patterson and Eric Gaylord. The Housing Authority Board, two-year terms, Lisa Oldmixon and Herbert Midgley. Mayor's Committee on People with Disabilities, two-year terms, Victor Galan, Janie Richardson, Laura Sow, Teresa Colvin, and Deidra Harrison. Planning and Zoning Commission, Margaret Forbes and Matt Perry, these are two-year terms. Zoning Board of Adjustments, two-year terms, would be Rhonda Ward, this is, regular members would be Rhonda Ward, Mary Ann Bentley and Olivia Keritzey. And then alternate members would be Charles Wheeler and Clayton Jones. And I'd offer that in the form of a motion.
I'll second.
Have a second? Any discussion?
Yes, I just want to say, what a great group of people that applied for these boards and commissions. Really enjoyed the interviewing process and there were just not enough spots to put all of the good people that we interviewed. I mean, I really want to thank our community for for applying for these boards and commissions. And I I encourage you to continue to do that because we really do need great people on these boards and commissions. And we'll appoint another group in in January.
Okay, those in favor, signal of saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right, we will move on to number eight, our work session and continue the presentations of the Department Budget Fiscal Year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three.
Mayor, before, you can come on, but before we get started with the departments, we have three, like I said, three smaller departments left. So this shouldn't take a whole long time, but I did want to let you know that I do have an update for the budget calendar. So as soon as we finish these three departments, I want to go over with you what to expect on those August meetings. And then we can, we can transition to to your discussion on the principles.
Thank you so much. I'm BD Rampon, I'm over the Customer Service and Utility Billing Department. Our full-time summary here of employees, we are full-staffed right now. I would like to add an additional staff member for the next budget year. I'll touch on that in just a second. And our proposed budget, here you can see some increases. You can expect it, fuel, postage for our supplies and materials, maintenance and structures, you'll see took a jump. That's going to be the meters, meter cost, and we're having to put more in the ground as our system gets older. So it's kind of a combination of a couple of things there. Contractual services, of course, went up a little bit as well. And that's going to be mainly tied to credit card fees. More people we have pay by credit card, more fees we get. And the city absorbs those, we don't, you know, we don't pass them on to the customer. Like I said, it's pretty self-explanatory, I guess. As far as any big asks, we've got one vehicle we need to replace, it's ten years old. It's it's structurally failing, the bid and whatnot on it. And the new position I touched on, our reading system that we have here, it's cutting edge now. We put it in in two thousand eight, everybody's still trying to catch up. Takes hourly reads, takes all that data and it can dump it into lots of different reports. One of our favorite is a leak report, we call it. If water runs so many hours consecutively, we notify citizens. Well, currently, I try to run it, well, I try to run it twice a month. They want me to run it weekly. And and I do try to do that, at least touch on the biggest ones, but it's it's a lot of data. When I run this report, there's generally over three hundred accounts on it. And then you have to sift through it. I mean, not every one of these is going to be a leak. Pilgrim's Pride's a big example. I mean, it's it's going to flag them every time, but there's there's other, like I said, there's other factors in there too. So you got to look at it before you call these people and tell them they may have a leak. And like I said, it's very time-consuming. What I'm asking for is a position, a report analyst, basically, to run all these reports and sift through them. Now, it's not just the leak report, but that's the biggest part, that's the one I'm I'm most concerned about. But now also, you can pick up on meters that are failing by looking at use trends. Maybe some of them have tapered off quite a bit in the past few years as they age. Stuff like that, that they can pick up on that I may miss because when I'm billing and and looking at the whole city, thirteen thousand five hundred to fourteen thousand accounts, I don't catch it all. I don't pretend to catch it all. I do the best I can and I like to thank, well, actually, our whole staff, I think we do pretty good. But yeah, that is my big ask. Like I said, I hate to have all that info and not be able to use it. Y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Is there any comments from the public? Okay, any comments from council?
Thank you for catching our leaks. I just want to thank you.
We do try hard, I promise.
I appreciate it, many times living in an old house.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank y'all for your time.
This is the one with lots of questions, isn't it?
I have six questions.
For this one, yeah, me too, I have a whole set of questions.
Oh, wait for airport.
This ain't mine.
Oh, no.
Hold your questions.
We have you next, yes.
Saving the best for last.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Joe Sefalu, we are airport manager here in Nacogdoches. We're going to go through this fairly quick, we don't have a real large budget, but we do have a big profile out there at airports. We are fully staffed, we used to have two full-time employees and I had one employee that was SFA student and he wanted to go part-time. So what I did is got with HR and we have two part-times, he went part-time and I have another. So that actually saved the city some money that you'll see here shortly. And it gives me more flexibility on scheduling as well, so it worked out real good. And not a lot of changes here, the personnel, you can see what I just mentioned. Supplies and materials, about the same. Maintenance, I did request a little bit more money, we have some aging mowers. We have some aging mowers and tractors out there at the airport, need attention. And the contractual services, right there, you can see that that's the utilities, I think everybody else is experiencing the same thing. Let me go back up to supplies and materials. There is quite a large increase there, but that's mainly from our operating fuel and our aviation fuel. The aviation fuel is not a total expense because we do get revenue from that. So it's not a total wash on that. We do have one project coming up next year that we have already presented to TechDOT. Our runway needs to be resurfaced. It's about fifteen years old, we just had a structural survey done on it, and it did show that it is in need of some repair. So we get a ninety-ten federal funding on that, so you're looking at the cost of the city for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on that project. Any questions?
So with us seeing all the cost overruns, will that happen on this million and a half dollar project also?
Well, that's hard to say. Right now, the TechDOT has to come out with their engineers. That hun, that one point five million is an estimate from KSA. Their, TechDOT will send out their engineers to take a look at the runway and give us what they think it'll, it'll cost to repair. Now, with materials and everything else going up, it's, it's hard to say. But that's a conservative estimate, I think.
Anybody in the audience? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, it's time for your questions.
No.
Yeah, anybody can ask.
So as you all know, I have my paper here to read from because I get really, really nervous. And Pam is at the ready if I walk out of the room. I'm Jan Vincent, I'm your city secretary. I'm going to be presenting my budget, which I think this is my first time to do it in front of you all. So right now, there is one position in my department, and it is me. I'm going to ask for something else a little bit later, but we'll discuss that in just a few minutes. So there will be one new request for the city secretary department. In my budget, everything's pretty much the same. You'll see a little bit of difference, well, it's actually quite a bit, in maintenance of equipment and contractual services. And the reason for that is we have a new open records request software that we started using, and we have that on a contract. It is in the maintenance of equipment budget now. Before, it was in the contractual services budget because it was a subscription services. So we had a system that we did away with, and we're using a new system now. So that's why that money is switched in those two, in those two line items. And then there was a company that bought out, the company that did our codification of ordinances. And so because we are already using some of their services, we get a little bit of a decrease in that, so that comes out of contractual services as well. So the Office Assistant One, Three is the new position that I am requesting in supplemental. It's fifty-three thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars annually for that position. And I believe, Pam?
All-in, all benefits.
All-in, all benefits, everything is in that amount. This particular position will be a clerical support for, position for the third floor at City Hall. On the third floor at City Hall, it is administration, city attorney, finance, and the IT department. And there is not a clerical person, well, there is, it's me. And so this position will work as that main clerical position for all of the third floor. As many of, as many of you already know, I spend a lot of time answering the phone. My desk gets the main City Hall phone calls, which is a lot. Transferring calls, scheduling appointments, greeting and assisting customers, making copies, scanning documents, preparing for meetings, and so on, and so on, and so on. And so with those interruptions, mistakes get made, like the mistake on the agenda tonight. Once I, once you get interrupted, it takes a minute to get back to what you're doing. So hopefully, this position will allow me to focus on the city secretary duties and not just the clerical duties throughout my day. They would also be trained to fill in for me if I got hit by a bus, or if I retire. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Anybody?
We've been threatened not to ask any questions.
I don't know who would have said that to you. I can answer most of them if it has to do with what I do on a daily basis, without crying or shaking or sweating.
Anybody in the public have a question, comment? Mitch Kirkland?
Mr. Kirkland, do you have any questions, sir?
Thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
So I did go pull up the budget calendar. And so I just kind of wanted to go through each of the next meetings that are scheduled and kind of what is expected of council at each of those. So on August the second, that's the first time you'll actually see the draft budget, the first copy of the draft budget. You will also see the submitted calculated tax rates that we received from the appraisal district. So this will calculate the no new revenue rate, the voter approval rate, those types of, of rates. This is not a ask of what rate you want to set. This is just the, the calculated rates per the state guidelines. We'll submit those to you on the second. On August the sixteenth, we again will have a budget workshop. You will have had a couple of weeks to go over the draft budget, come back with any additions or deletions, or changes of any sort. But we also, that night last year, maybe the year before, the states added a, a new piece of this tax rate setting process. This is where you will vote on a proposed tax. You're not voting on the tax. You're voting on, basically, you're telling me, build the budget based on this tax rate. Does not mean that you cannot reduce that tax rate later on if you, if you so choose. I'm a little iffy on whether we can go up from that rate. I don't know that, I think what you, and I will verify that. But I think at that point, when you, when you tell me, this is, this is where we want to go, let's, let's go from here, I will build the budget on that. Before we ratify the rate in September, we have plenty of time to, to fluctuate with that, that tax rate. I will have to find out, though, if we so choose to go above that proposed rate, if that's a possibility, I'm not sure, I will find out about that. That will happen on the sixteenth, so that is a, that is a vote that will happen on the sixteenth. It does not set the tax rate, it just proposes a tax rate for the process. Since our meetings are early in August, it does give us the ability, if needed, to have a additional budget workshop on the twenty-third or the thirtieth, if that is something that is needed. I know we have some issues with scheduling late, last minute, but during the budget, that's one of those times that I think as y'all work through that process, if, if you feel the need to have an additional workshop before we actually come back for the final budget hearing in September, we do have a couple of weeks there that we could potentially set a, a workshop, especially since, since we've, we've eliminated the one on the ninth. So that's just out there in case we need it. On September the sixth, will be our budget hearing on the budget. I mean, a public hearing on the budget, I'm sorry. We can adopt it if we want to that night, but we do not have to. We just have to have a public hearing. And then new state law, we have seven days. And so September the thirtieth is a special-called meeting to set the tax rate. And so it has to be done within a seven-day timeframe. And so that's why we can't wait till the second regularly scheduled meeting in September.
I'm sorry, you said September the what?
September the thirteenth. So the sixth will be the budget. We actually do a public hearing on the tax rate and the budget on the sixth. By, by law, we only have to do a budget public hearing, but we, we do both to give the, the citizens the, the ability to, to have public comment on that as well. On the thirteenth is the date that we have to ratify the tax rate and adopt the budget if we do not adopt it on September the sixth. So that's kind of the ask that we, you will see as we progress through, through the next couple of months with the budget. Any questions on that?
So for late in August, will you be back?
I'll get back this, late the sixteenth.
Yeah, so we could, we could do that if we wanted to.
So we have the twenty-third or the thirtieth, if you wanted to stay on a Tuesday, of course, we can do whatever. So that, that's an option. So if, if y'all want to discuss that on the, the nineteenth, when we do, because we'll have a, we'll have a budget item for us pretty much the rest of, of the time until the budget is adopted. So that we could, we could choose to, to call a special meeting on the twenty-third or the thirtieth if y'all, if y'all want to have another opportunity to, to discuss budget.
This morning is very helpful about the meeting dates.
Okay.
Yeah, because this one was a surprise too, so that kind of threw me.
So you had mentioned that you wanted to have?
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions that have been raised before, and this is information I'd like to have before we really get into budget deliberations. And one is, how much were salaries in fringe in, in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two? If you could just lay that out, and then whatever is proposed, of course, we don't have a proposal for two thousand twenty-three. I'd like to see.
Okay, so we, we do have that data because we present that as part of your draft budget. So just so I'm, I make sure that, that you see what you want to see. It will be by department. Do you want, you want everything, all-in personnel costs?
Yeah, I just want to know the total, what, how?
Total, all-in.
Right, that's what I want to know.
By department or in total, would you like?
I'd like to know the, the total.
Yeah, I kind of would too, I think so.
And then also, as a percentage of the budget.
Oh, yeah, we do that every year too, because it's.
But just, yeah, total really helps me. So I'd like to see where we are on that. And then I know we talked about the positions of the police department. I really would like to see those, you know, how many, where we, where we, how many people we actually had in the police department, and then when we lost and gained, you know.
Same timeframe.
It, it could be, I'd like to go back a little bit further, but may, maybe one more year. And I was looking at every six months for them, I mean, twice a year, not just to get a gauge. I'd like to see what's going on with that. And then I have a couple of other things, but I'll, I'll wait and let other people, okay. And so we've talked a whole lot about, a whole lot of increases. And then across the board, there's a twenty percent increase, you know, just for, you know, electricity and, that you talked about, and, and healthcare, and a lot of other things. So I'm hoping that when you make a, we, that when you bring us back this proposal, that we have a proposal that shows nothing, what, what you would do if we don't have any extra taxes. You know, I'd like to see that, what, that bare bones.
Sure.
And then, and then I'd like to see preferably three of them. Like one is, you know, we can't raise taxes more than this amount, so you'd have that, right? Because it's, I forget, three point something percent?
Yeah, three point five.
You have it in your sleeve, right?
Three point five.
Three point what?
Three point five.
Three point five, okay. And then something in between, what normally it is, you know, like one point.
So, so let me explain to you what we normally do and make sure that this is going to, to be what you need. On the nineteenth, we are going to bring to you all of our new programs. We did this last year. We brought you new programs, new personnel, those things that are not currently covered by any revenue source. And we prioritize those, and y'all went through, and we chose what we wanted to try to fund. And, and, and because what, the budget that is, that I'm preparing now for August the second, none of that is in there because I'm having to build this budget based on existing tax rates. No, no, I'm, I'm not building anything in until we go through the process of y'all saying, these are the things that we want to fund with property taxes.
So I, I found that a little problematic last year. So I'm asking for something a little bit different to inform my decision. So first of all, I'm not familiar with budgets that say, everything we have is great, we don't need to cut anywhere. That, it surprises me to have, all we want to do is add. So possibly, there might be areas where we could cut. Maybe not, but possibly there are. So I'm asking that instead of us bearing the burden of saying, well, we want to not fund your secretary, or, I mean, your administrative assistant, and, or your position. I mean, I don't feel equipped to decide which one of those positions is needed more. I think the city needs to propose to us what needs to happen.
Right. And as far as, as far as cuts, operational cuts, those, those, those are happening. And, and, and we are to that point now, after we've presented to you all the department's requests. Mario and I will sit down, and we will start working on that. We've already had departments that have, have volunteered up. These are things that we, we thought we needed, there have been changes, so let's take this out because we can do this instead. And so that is an ongoing process with the budget. These things that we are going to be presenting to you are completely new. So last year, it was, it was, we are going to enhance the, the code enforcement area, that program we want to enhance. It took new positions, new vehicles. Those are the kinds of things that in order to fund a new program, there's not, if, if, if her department, if we have to cut her department in order to fund her position, there's nowhere to cut because her operational budget outside of her salary is twenty thousand dollars. And so those types of things that we're bringing to you are the new things that are not going, ongoing. We are constantly looking at how we can reduce operational expenses. That's a big thing that, that Mario and I will spend a lot of time between now and the first draft budget that y'all get, trying to make sure that as we operate now, we can do within our current rate structure. And as you've seen, a lot of departments have, have shown you their operational cuts. Some of them went down. They, our, our departments have taken upon themselves to, to realize that we're in this position this year. And they've reduced them, themselves, those things. They didn't ask for some of the things that maybe they had planned or asked for last year. And so it's a constant thing. I think at this point, there are, there are decisions that we, we rely on you to decide the direction that you want to take the city. Do you want a new program? If that is, these are the people and the, and the resources that we need to go that route. One of those being police department. We're going to come to you with some solutions, we hope, to the financial piece of us being down an entire shift of police officers. Those are proposals that we're going to have to provide to you, understanding we can't do it within our current rate structure. And so those things that we're asking y'all to make those decisions on are the things that, that we don't have a, a revenue stream to cover, and there's no way to cut because you wanted to know the percentages. In general funds, seventy-seven percent of the general fund budget is personnel cost. And so when you start trying to fund a lot of things, there's not a lot of places to cut unless you start reducing staff. And that is, that, that's always an option. But those are the things that we have to rely on y'all to, to, to direct us on.
I have a, a, a follow-up related. I think that last year, I, I remember after budget presentations per department, I remember things, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think I dreamed it, but things were classified tier one, tier two, is that right? Okay, and then I think that you were able to say, okay, if our tax rate stays the same, then we're able to fund this stuff. Or if our tax, if we increase our tax rate by X amount, we're able to fund this. I, is that kind of what you were asking with wanting to see three separate examples based on what we did with the tax rate?
Yes, and also, but, but I, I felt very uncomfortable being in a position, not that, I mean, I have to make decisions all the time, but, but it's very complicated to try and decide, wait a minute, you're that position or that position. We need a, a bare bones presented to us, you know, first, and, instead of us picking and, I mean, we ultimately may have to pick and choose, but we need to see this, this at a bare bones.
August the sixth, you're going to get a bare bones budget. That, I'll be honest with you. The budget I am preparing now, I am diligently trying to, to balance within our current rate structure. So everything you see on the nineteenth is going to be, we're going to ask, if these are the things that we want to proceed with, we have to have a revenue source to cover those because you're going to get a bare bones budget.
And then the next thing is, you know, what, what would be the next level? So yeah, I'm with you on the tier one.
Yeah, so, so what, and what she's saying on that sheet, there, there was a little thing over to the side, had tier one, and it- and it, when we needed it, tier two. And then underneath there, that said, every one cent on the property tax rate generates this much money.
Yes.
So that you knew if we could generate with one cent on the top, property tax, you could generate a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and this program was seventy thousand, and this one was two hundred, you couldn't do them both. You could do this one and a half of this one, or you, so I'm saying that there, that's the way that was structured, so that you knew how much you had to play with based on how much a penny on the tax roll is. Knowing that here's a whole bunch of options, okay? Because we do have more options than we're going to have the ability to fund. I'm be honest with you, we're, we're going to have more options. It happens every year. There are things that we need to do, that we cannot fund everything. And Mario says, oh, we have a lot to do, but can't do everything in one year. And so you're going to see some options, but you're also gonna see how much it's going to cost to fund. And then it's literally what we did last year was go through and say, for this amount of money, we can fund these particular items. Last year, we were able to do some, some of those things under the current rate structure. Because of fuel and increased supply cost and electricity, what I'm gonna tell you now is that all of those things are going to be at, at the point that we're looking at a, at any, a, a tax increase in order to fund any of them, because our existing tax structure is going to cover what we, what we're doing operationally now. It's just, it's just the nature of the, of the economy right now, unfortunately. So, I will be, I will do my best to get you the, the way you wanna see it, but I, understanding it's, it's, it's very difficult to get one budget together. It's almost impossible to do three. So we will get you the budget, and then we'll have the, the conversations on what to add.
Good reason, I mean, just whatever.
But the salary thing I like. I think that'd be good to see hats change, 'cause it's, it's certainly changed for all of us in, in business, so, but I, I'd be anxious to see that too.
And the police positions. It's very hard for us to make judgments with that data.
We will have all that for you on the nineteenth meeting.
Okay, s, I'm new to this, so I too would like, I mean, I would like to get with you and be able to have a more comprehensive understanding of our financial standing. Uh, I know we talk, we, we're talking right now about the revenue we generate versus the rev, the expenditures we, we budget. Uh, but I also, you know, before I can vote on any budget or on, on issuing bonds, I really need to know what our fund balances are and what our, what our investments are and what our, our total financial position is, because, you know, we're talking about increasing or keeping taxes the same. I, I think that's, it's really important to know that it's not, it's not just those, it's not just the revenue we generate and what we expend. It's, we also have investments, and we have, we have fund balances in other places that we can fund some of these from.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I, that, that's helpful too. Um, and, and I do, I think one of the issues I have is because all of this is by department, which is helpful, but there may be some creative ways to solve some of the problems that are within departments. You know, by creatively looking at like program management across the systems, you know, across departments or other. Anyway, I don't know, and I'm not in the position that I can know. That is where you all are, and so I'm, I'm hoping you, and I'm sure you're already being very creative with it, and I'm just showing those things out there.
We try to do the most with the little that we have.
Okay, anyone else? All right, we'll move on to number nine. Executive sessions. Executive session for city council to receive information and deliberate on matters specified in subchapter D of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Council may reconvene in open session to vote on the matter. We will deliberate on A regarding economic development negotiations under Government Code Section 551.087 as follows. One, discuss or deliberate regarding commercial or financial information the city has received from business projects the city body seeks to have locate in the city of Nacogdoches and with which the city is conducting economic development negotiations. And two, deliberate offer of financial or other incentive to business prospects described by subdivision one above. We will not deliberate on B, so we will recess. Okay, we'll come back from, uh, executive session at, uh, seven seventeen. And where there's no action to be taken, so we're adjourned.